You mean you can't hear me? I'd like to send a big shout out to our emergency response teams that are working very hard to bring these fires under control. I would also like to say welcome to our guests from Fox Lake. It's a very trying time for them and our team is doing everything in their power to make sure that they have a positive experience here. I guess if you want to call it an experience, I'd also like to welcome Rainbow Lake. And we certainly, our thoughts are with everybody, so thank you. I'd like to begin with the adoption of the agenda. If there is any...
Madam Mayor, administration has no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Anybody else? Could I have a motion, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. We're going to begin with the public hearing and the first one is the public hearing bylaw number 103223. And it's a public hearing for the responsible animal ownership bylaw. I'll call the hearing to order. Pursuant to the section 605 of the municipal government act, a notice of this public hearing was published in the Echo Pioneer newspaper for two consecutive weeks, posted on the town's social media as well as to the town's website. Interested persons wishing to make a verbal or written presentation were informed they could do so at the hearing or by providing a presentation to the town's municipal clerk before four o'clock on Monday, May 8. My name is Crystal McAtire and I will chair this public meeting. Please direct all your comments and questions through me. Council's here only to listen to the information presented and make a decision on the matter that is the subject of this hearing. This is a formal hearing, not a debate. Everyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity to speak once to the matter as called upon by myself, the chair. Each presenter must state his or her full name and their interest in the matter, including whether they are in support or they are opposed. Individuals who do not identify themselves will not be given the opportunity to speak. Presenters have a time limit and we're please asking you to stay within that five-minute time limit on the presentation and are encouraged when speaking to keep your presentation to the point and refrain from restating the previous speaker's points. Council may ask questions of any speaker or presenter. Written submissions will be retained by the town. So I'd like to call upon the C A O to introduce the subject to the hearing and the C A O may give delegation introductions. Council members, you may ask questions for clarification relating to the subject. I call upon the C A O to read any relevant correspondence received that is not part of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, we have not received any correspondence on the issue. At council's pleasure, I will delegate this to Director Gavin to present to council and to the public.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bylaw 1032-23 involves repealing the assorted animal bylaw 923-12 and animal control bylaw 984-18 and adopting a new responsible animal ownership bylaw known as 1032-23. On April 11th, 2023, bylaw 32-23 received first reading by council. Administration completed several methods of public engagement over the last four weeks, including an information booth at the community catch-up event which was held on April 22nd at the Curling Rink, some informational posters that went out on social media as well as the Echo Pioneer newspaper. I've had a few email exchanges and phone call discussions with some members of the public and some one-on-one meetings with interested community groups and individuals. The purpose of bylaw 1032-23 is to regulate, control and protect all animals within the municipal boundaries of High Level. The bylaw was developed from the existing animal control bylaw known as 984-18 and significantly amended and added to to effectively address historic, current and impending animal control issues within High Level. Feedback from the public and stakeholders on the bylaw has largely been positive and informative as well, so it has contributed to several amendments that are in the bylaw right now. So today we're looking for, when we get to the item, a second reading with the amendments that address the input received so far from the public.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the bylaw? Would you please come forward to the desk?
My name is Jerry Miller. I am a member, well, not a member, I am a citizen of High Level. I am neither at this time for or against this bylaw. I need clarification on some of its wordings and some of its proposals that I not understand in this. So, Madam Mayor, I have some questions, if I may.
Yes, you may.
First of all, when we're talking about a limit on how many pets can be in a household, what is that limit?
So the limit that was proposed at first reading was four, but I have made some amendments based on public feedback for people that have an existing amount of four or more is grandfathered in. If an individual relocates to town who already has four or more animals is permitted to do so. And then, what was the other one, fostering, so for the Humane Society, if people are fostering animals from there which would exceed four, they are able to do so.
Okay, thank you very much on that one. Now, the form of the copy that, or of the bylaw that I read was very, like I said, very confusing, but it used the words free roaming. Now, what does free roaming mean?
So...
I'm sorry, I should have...
That's okay. Director Gavin, Mr. Miller's question is, if his cats never go outside his house, are they free roaming? Are we referring to all the cats in town that do not have licenses?
Any cats that would be off your own property, the owner's property?
As long as they are staying in the house or getting within like maybe two feet of the door and then brought back in, they're not free roaming?
Well, anywhere on your property, so the limits of your parcel would be considered not free roaming.
So would I therefore still need a license or not even need a license?
So we did make a change where we're doing registration for cats and dogs. So this would be, I mean, it's a requirement under the bylaw, but we rely on people voluntarily registering their cats so that, and dogs for that matter, so that if we come across an animal at large, we can identify who the owner of that pet is.
Would that include microchips?
As in the amended bylaw, yes.
If I have a microchip in all my cats, they somehow got out and got captured, you would be able to identify them with no problem?
Exactly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that's about what I wanted to know. If anything else comes up, may I have another chance to speak?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, to him or...
A little bit, he can see.
Counselor Welkey might have a question for you, Mr. Miller?
So, well, not so much for you, Mr. Miller, but I guess just for further clarification on that exact discussion we were just having. So for my own sake as well, maybe Madam Mayor through Director Gavin. So the number is four, free roaming. If somebody were to have, say, just for example, six cats that don't leave the home, that would be allowed, correct?
Counselor Welkey, the maximum limit is four. However, if they are already owned prior to the passing of this bylaw, they would be grandfathered.
Okay, so the number is still four, even if they don't leave the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as they're grandfathered in, that's why it would probably be a good idea to register your cats?
Well, and I believe, Mr. Miller, like you were alluding to the, to whether or not if one had more or if one had animals that, say a cat, let's use a, sure. Let's use a cat for an example.
Okay, you can speak from there if you want.
Let's use a cat, for example. If... Well, I'm just clarifying, so I just, because I think it, I think you were asking something different. That's, that's what I, that's what I'm...
I'm speaking for my own situation. I have five cats at home, all of them have microchips. None of them go outside. Far as I'm concerned, I should have to register them as... Of course, I don't know yet what possible license they have. My wife and I are living on a very fixed income. License may be given. Just want to make sure at a time. I require with requirements to be placed upon my job level. Also, with my cats. Right now, obviously, I'm going to need to be grandfathered in. Do I have to talk to somebody about grandfathering?
That's a very good question. We need to know who is grandfathered in. So, thank you for that. Director Gavin?
We definitely rely on compliance with the bylaw. I mean, there is no intention to go around door-to-door checking how many animals people have prior to passing of the bylaw. In terms of the fees per animal, they are, they are $10 per animal. So in your case, as you're saying, if we were to assign that same cost to cats, it would be $10 per cat. However, tonight, as I stated before, we are looking for a second reading and potentially doing more edits prior to third. So we could look at an exemption for people that have microchipped pets or and/or pets that are considered house pets that don't go outside. So that's, I'm writing stuff down as we're chatting, so thank you.
Excellent questions.
I missed that, sorry.
So he's asking the question, if a dog is only outside the house on a leash, does it have to be licensed?
Well, yes, even under the current bylaw, that is true, yeah. I mean, obviously, we do have incidents where we pick up dogs at large that are unlicensed and then before they are released to the owner, they must pay the license and registration fee as well as the fines for picking them up.
Yes. You're welcome. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the bylaw? Okay, come forward, please. Hi. Your name?
Okay, my name's Dalrene Drago and I live in High Level.
Do you want to spell that for the secretary, please?
Oh, sure. D A L R E E N. Dalrene, and then Drago, D R E G O.
Thank you.
Um, sorry. So I had questions regarding the hobby breeder segment of it. Okay.
What is your question?
So I have a few questions. The first one is if you are already breeding animals, like it says that you need to get a home inspection, a home occupation permit, sorry. If you're already breeding them, what happens if you don't get the permit? You have to get rid of all of the animals that you have? Or how does that work? Like, is there grandfathering for that?
Go ahead.
Yes, as with all bylaws, any new bylaw that is adopted, it's really an application moving forward. So if it already exists, then it's not something that we would then require a permit for afterwards, so.
Okay, and so that includes like the limited of the four breeding pairs or anything?
Exactly.
Okay. I think that's...
So just for clarification, you have four pairs of dogs that you're breeding in town?
No, so we have multiple pairs of birds that we breed. So we have an aviary.
Okay.
And it's in our home, but it's more than four.
Yes.
And it, yeah.
Glad to see it's birds.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I think...
Deputy Mayor has a question, please?
So, just one of the, more of an observation, but the whole idea behind the grandfathering part is that those, in my opinion, are really the people that need to register so that if it turns out down the road, a complaint is made or an investigation is undertaken, the only way we would know whether or not you qualify for the grandfathering exemption is if in fact you had registered at the time the bylaws introduced.
Okay, so birds have to be registered too?
Oh, no.
It's don't have to be registered.
But don't let them get away.
Right. Well, we have them registered like with the A A C C, for example, right? But not with the town, so I don't know of that.
I was aware that this existed only during the public consultation period. There were a number of people that had mentioned, I didn't know it was you specifically, but a number of people had mentioned the operation to myself. But I mean, it's the same thing we do with all bylaws, right? When we change the land use bylaw, if like development constraints change, but it then is associated with new development moving forwards. So, I mean, dogs have always been required to be registered, but there's a lot of people that don't register their dogs.
Right, I just wasn't sure how to apply to birds. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the bylaw? Okay, come forward, come forward.
Hello, my name is Amanda Ebert and I represent the Northern Lakes Regional Humane Society. So my first question is, if a cat is picked up in this microchip, will it be taken straight back to the owner or will it be turned over to the shelter and a fine associated to it, like with dogs?
That's a good question, because I don't think we have a chip reader here at the office. So it would probably have to go somewhere. Chip reader.
Madam Mayor, so the other reason for deferring third reading is we need to do some amendments to the administrative directive 31-18 to cover the cat changes to the bylaw and also purchase a microchip reader and a live humane trap. So there's a few things that we still need to do, so that's why I'm looking at deferring third reading.
My other question is for registering animals, is there any way to make it so that when a person does adopt from the shelter, because we have all the registration, we microchip, we do everything there, is there anywhere to, way to include that registration with the town in the paperwork that we do to cut out one step of the process for the new owner?
That's a possibility too for third reading. Thank you for bringing up.
Another question that someone just asked, if they are holding animals for someone who has been displaced due to flood or fire, will that just be overlooked by the town?
Absolutely. Would be my. She looked at me, gave me the eyes, but I believe that, yeah. But I mean, that's a council decision.
Perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else wish to speak to the bylaw? Come forward, please, give your name.
Your name? Catherine Barrow.
Hi, Catherine.
I just had a question about the clarification of the domestic animals. It's kind of been touched upon with the birds, but I'm thinking like fish or hamsters, even if you're not breeding them, right? So if someone has, for instance, if you had three cats and two hamsters and wanted to get another hamster, I'm just picking animals off the top of my head, do the, do the animals in cages sort of count under the bylaw?
Good question.
I'm just trying to get to it and I don't believe it does. I believe it's free roaming.
It does say later on, sort of animals at large are animals free roaming, which as I assume outside of cages. But in another part in section 11, it says just for domestic animals.
Director Gavin, it would be 11B is what...
Yes, so 11B says, notwithstanding the definition, I knew we'd had some sort of an exemption here. It only applies to dogs, cats, ferrets and other domestic animals normally housed outside of a secure enclosure or aquarium.
That was on the draft part that I saw. Perfect, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any more questions from or presentations? Okay, well, thank you for participating. That's awesome to have those questions brought up. Is there anybody else? I guess I have to give this three wishing to speak. And third and final call. Oh, Director Gavin?
Just one more, Madam Mayor. I did receive an email yesterday and I did ask the individual if they would like their letter presented to council. They did say not necessarily, as one of the amendments to the bylaw had mitigated their major concern about collars on cats, because we added the microchipping portion. However, there was still a concern about if the cat is outside of the yard, is that considered at large? And if it's picked up, could they face fines from the peace officers or the town? Which I did respond saying technically, yes. However, the officers do have a bit of discretion based on the circumstances and we also haven't finished drafting the administrative directive on the procedure and process for picking up cats in particular. So, and we will share that information before third reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Their question for administration. So just because we're talking about microchips, is the town going to have the ability to insert a microchip into an animal or that's the owner's responsibility to go to a vet or to the Humane Society?
So it was a discussion that we did have with one of the community groups last week. I do have, I will bring back some options to council regarding microchipping as well. But right now, I guess the owner should be on the owner. And then I do have some discussion points that I don't really want to get into right now that I'll bring back to council later date.
Okay. So if there's no further comments or questions, I will request a motion from council to close the meeting. Oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand. Well, we will have another reading, Mr. Miller, so. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Yep, come up here so we can hear you.
Sorry, I just had one more question about how you actually go about obtaining a permit, a home occupation permit.
So that's under the land use bylaw. So we do have a home occupation application form that you would submit to the town and we would process it under the land use bylaw as well as the provisions under this bylaw as well. And those are typically, the standards for those under the bylaw is neighborhood notifications to the immediate vicinity and then a 21-day public appeal period. And then after that's done, then you're good if there's no appeals.
Okay.
So in simple terms, just come into the office now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so no more questions? Okay, council, can I have a motion to close the hearing, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. Thank you for your attendance to this public hearing and council will discuss it further later in the agenda. So the second hearing, public hearing is for the number 103323 amendment to the land use bylaw. Have to read all this again.
No, it's, it's almost, other than that part, it's word for word what you read in the first one.
So pursuant to the section 606 of the M T A, this notice, this public hearing has been published in the Echo Pioneer for two weeks. It's been posted on our social media page and our website and interested persons were to come to the hearing or make a presentation to the C A O. My name is Crystal McAtire and I'll chair this meeting and you can pose your questions through me and I will send them to the rate department. Council's here to listen to you and to listen to what you have to say about the bylaws. This is a formal hearing and we won't debate anything. We'll just listen to your ideas. Everybody wishing to speak, of course, come forward. And you have five minutes and you've been very gracious and not used those five minutes. Council may ask questions of you and then we'll go ahead. So C A O will introduce this hearing and council may ask questions. C A O?
Madam Mayor, I will defer to Director Gavin to read any relevant correspondence and to introduce the bylaw changes.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Bylaw 1033-23 involves several amendments to land use bylaw 1018-21. Amendments include reducing the maximum floor area for buildings or structures that require a development permit, a new permit exemption for pergolas and development permit requirements for developments with a project value over $5,000 and less exempted under the Safety Codes Act. Enhancing the development authority's discretion by allowing administration to reduce the radius for adjacent landowner notifications for home occupations and then significantly simplifying their... And then significantly simplifying variances by allowing 100% variances for all provisions of the bylaw except for three, which is building height, lot coverage and parking requirements. Uh, increasing the maximum building height for accessory buildings to match the primary building height. Um, and expanding the parcels where helicopter landing pads are allowed as discretionary uses, both within the industrial districts. Uh, adding minimum parking requirements for general service uses and requiring public health inspections for select home occupation types. Uh, allowing permanent and temporary signage on town owned lands and public rights of way with approved signage permits. Adding a definition and provisions for manufactured home, tiny homes within the R1 and R4 land use districts. Uh, adding discretionary commercial uses within select high density residential districts. That's R3, only north of Highway 58, west of Dewberry Road, Black Spruce Drive and Chinook Crescent. And then the last one is the rezonings of three parcels, 76 LZ OT from no zoning to direct control. And then 5447 LZ OT and 2120533 block two lot four from park to industrial. And on April 11th, bylaw 10 dash, 1033-23 received first reading from council. And to date, most of the feedback has been positive from the public on this bylaw.
Thank you, Director Gavin. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to the bylaw? Second call for anybody wishing to speak to the bylaw. Third call. Thank you for attending this bylaw hearing. Could I have a motion to um, close the public hearing? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Thank you once again. So I'd like to call upon Staff Sergeant, uh, Deveron. Nice to see you again.
Sorry for being late and I appreciate you.
Oh.
So I'm not going to take much of your time. I know you have a lot going on. I forward the stats. This is, uh, start of week number two for me in high level now. And most of my, uh, last week, we had to help when the fires broke out. So I'm still, my, my belongings are all still in boxes. But, um, the stats that I forward, the CAO, did anyone have any questions? Uh, at all about what was there? For the summer, to some, pardon me, it's been a long day. All the, the stats have sort of gone up. It's a higher crime rate than what we were compared to the past. So that's, uh, that's sort of that, but. Persons crimes are up. Property crimes are up.
Is there any questions from council? I must apologize, I didn't meet with you this morning. I wasn't here. So, um, we recognize that we have extra people in town. We hope you're well staffed and able to.
Yes, I can speak to that.
Okay.
We're finally getting some resource, some extra resources in other than what we have. Cause we had to send our people to help as anywhere they could in Fox Lake and John Door. Uh, I have three members right now, four members right now that were brought in that are specifically for us to help if there's any extra needs in community. And we're working on getting another deployment in, so we're never with a gap. We're pretty good right now in terms of our own resources. We got our sergeant named finally, so he's going to be on his way once he sells his house. And there are other corporal is supposed to be named anytime now. And there's a couple of members that have made their medical clearance that are coming up. So we're going to look really good for our own resources and district. And Edmonton has been working really hard to get not just our detachment, but the detachments all in our area, extra resources. If we have to help with evacuations or, you know, this community protection, extra patrols, so. Yeah.
Who's your new sergeant or you liberty to say?
I'll tell you, uh, I know Ms. Kiyomi. Uh, I worked with him for a brief time in Fort Vermillion when I was in Fox. Like I can't pronounce his first name, I'll butcher it. He's, uh, he's younger than me, a really nice guy, knows his stuff. He's coming out of Fort McMurray. So, uh, he'll be a good addition to our team here, uh, very much community oriented and, and, uh, we all want to do well and, and hit the ground and, you know, do the best we can, so. The new corporal, I don't know yet, they haven't told me. But I do know the, uh, Swan Hills member coming up. Very good member, hard worker, probably the most community oriented police officer that I've worked with in a long time. There's not a person in Swan Hills that doesn't know his name. And, uh, thought of very well, so he's going to do well here, so.
So, um, is there any questions of council? I don't want to take you away from what you need to do as well. Well, thank you very much for coming in and, uh, take care.
Yes.
Make sure you rest.
Yes.
If you need any help from the town.
Oh, the town's been, uh, you guys have been doing good. We're supported and we want to do what we can. If there's a certain format of the reports that I sent that the, the council prefers, let me know. Um, the person that usually prepares it for me is not in, so I had to, I prepared a few different samples of what I've used in the past, but thank you very much and.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Council, you have, uh, the minutes of, uh, April 24th. There's no errors. Could I have a motion to adopt? Could I have a motion, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. A motion to accept, uh, the staff sergeant's report? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. Uh, unfortunately, I know you guys are really sad, but I don't have a report tonight. It'll be extra long at our next meeting. I was on the road all day today, so. So could someone accept my non-verbal written report for information?
Accept your.
Thank you, Counselor Welkey. All in favor? Carried. Uh, other council committee reports, Deputy Mayor? And I was with him. Well, not really with him, but.
In last year's, um, financials. And now that they've had, uh, sort of do some further investigation, um, the current cost is down to about 1.5 million. And the commission is fortunate to be in the situation where we have a sufficient amount in reserves to actually transfer that into a specific reserve just for the closure, post closure. So, uh, and we've also invested that amount or are looking at investing that amount into a long-term investment that maybe has a higher yield. And hopefully just through growth over time will be enough to, uh, cover those costs. So now when feel it's end of life. A positive news, so no increase in the tipping fees.
Thanks, I'd miss. All right, thank you Deputy Mayor. Counselor Anderson?
On April 25th, I also attended the meeting with Minister Lowen. Uh, and on May 3rd, I attended the Golden Range Society meeting. They have a yard sale, a yard sale that will start June 1st and they're starting to take donations to that yard sale now. Uh, and a barbecue on the 2nd and 3rd of June as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Did you say what Wednesday yard sale?
Uh, it starts June 1st as far as I know the actual sale, but.
Okay.
They will start taking donations, uh, now, but preferably a little later into May. But if, if somebody wants to donate now, they could, um, no clothing. And everything in, you know, decent, resellable shape, that type of stuff.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Lambert?
On April 25th, I also attended the meeting with Minister Lowen. And on, and that same evening on April 25th, I had a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we just discussed the spring cleanup and the AGM which is coming up. Uh, we're actually tomorrow night will be the AGM for the chamber. So hoping to, we've been working together, reaching out with a lot of business or reaching out to a lot of businesses. Director Clark actually helped us out a lot with, uh, with getting prepared for that. And then we worked together with, uh, the CAO and, and Director Gavin on the spring cleanup to, uh, get that going for, I believe, May 13th to May 20th. As a live report.
Do you, uh, where's your venue for your AGM?
Oh, sorry, it's at the Mirage in the banquet room.
At seven?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Librian?
I also.
Sorry. He's out at the fires.
I also attended the meeting on the 25th with Minister Lowen, but that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Welkey?
On April 25th, uh, we held our first, uh, TV and film task force meeting. So excellent support, uh, everyone was there, including our administrative support, Bill and Leah. And so, uh, just for the public, this task force has been put together to come up with a framework in terms of reference and proceed policies and procedures for catering to the TV and film industry within our municipality so that we can help facilitate projects within that industry and perhaps in the region as well. But, uh, this would be designed for the town of High Level to have, um, a system of, of, uh, of facilitating those projects with that industry. So it's a growing industry and we're glad to be, um, putting, uh, putting something together to cater to that. It was, uh, so yeah, on the 25th, yeah, and that's all I have to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Could I have someone move council reports? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. Council's action list. Any questions? Seeing none, could I have someone move the list? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. The, uh, upcoming events? Any questions? Could I have a motion to move? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. The quarterly financial report, is there anything anybody wants to discuss? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Accept the, pick a motion to accept the quarterly report.
All in favor? Carried. So the RFD for the, um, responsible animal bylaw. CAO?
Madam Mayor, administration is requesting second reading of bylaw 1032-23, the, uh, new responsible animal ownership bylaw. And then we will make some amendments and bring back some clarification, uh, to, in likely the last meeting in May for third reading. Counsel's review.
Sorry, last meeting, last meeting in June.
Is anyone prepared to move second reading? Deputy Mayor?
I'll move second reading, but would suggest that we would have a public hearing again for third reading. Just in case there's comments on the latest revisions.
Council?
The last meeting in June.
Okay, any other questions, statements?
I have a question, uh, to, to Ms. Gavin. So there was really no clarification on this. And I, and I think it was my wife that gave you that presentation. So what she was asking was if, if you have animals that are at large in your yard, are they considered at large?
Uh, to Counselor Anderson, at large isn't only if it's off your property. So anywhere on your property is not at large.
Okay, thank you.
Director Gavin, I have, I know you're going to go through the chipping and everything, but, uh, it, is that going to include dogs too? Because there's a lot of microchipped dogs.
Yes. Any microchipped animal.
Hamsters? You didn't hear me. Go ahead.
So then with the, the numbers, if you end up having more animals than feeling that you're complying because they're not leaving the home or they're not at large, they're not so, so to speak, free roaming. I think like just the, yeah, those definitions should be, yeah, super clear. When it comes to if they got out and got picked up, how would a fine work if? I guess, I guess if they weren't registered, you would not be able to identify them. If the owner came to pick them up because they were looking for them, you know, then it, it, like, how do these numbers work? Um, do they get a fine then if it's discovered that they do have more than four?
Counselor, Counselor Welkey, I can help field that answer.
Okay.
Um, it's all discretionary. The intent of it is that, um, the law is there, the law exists. For enforcement measures if necessary. If it was discovered that you had more than the, the allotted amount, you could be liable to a penalty, to a fine, um, subject to that investigation. Um, however, the discretion would ultimately lie with the officer and as other remedial measures is available.
Okay. But I guess the, to stress that the registration is also for the animals' safety and sake too, to be, to be able to identify them, I guess, would be the main thing to stress to the public. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of Deputy Mayor's? No, could you say it again?
Oh, um, move second reading, um, as amended. And the third reading be the last meeting in June. But we also have a second public, um, hearing at that time in case there's further questions on the amended version.
June 26th, Madam Mayor.
June 1?
26th.
Okay. All in favor? Carried. The next one is the RFD for the bylaw of the land use, uh, bylaw, the amendment. Director Gavin? Request for second and third reading?
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, there's two slight changes that I did highlight in yellow. Cause there are some exemptions under the, uh, Safety Codes Act for the, um, because they have a building permit requirement for projects over, um, a dollar value of 5,000. But there's a number of project types that they do exempt. So as long as we're following that, then we're, um, I believe that was the intent of our change. Um, and then the other one, I can't even remember what it was.
The other yellow highlighted is.
Oh, yes, sorry. I just added types, so we're not going to do it for all. So we're not going to do it for all home occupations, so it would be, if anybody, it's discretion to the Development Authority for the public inspector checks prior to issuing a home occupation, but it would really be for people that are preparing food for human and animal consumption, would be the main ones that would trigger that. But yes, we're asking for a second and third reading for bylaw 1033-23.
Counselor Anderson, any questions? All in favor, carried. Third reading?
I'll make a motion for third reading.
Counselor Welkey? Question? All in favor, carried. Okay. Onto new business. RFD for bylaw 1037-23. Who's presenting this, CIO?
Madam Mayor, Director Gavin will present the next four items on the agenda.
This is bylaw 1037-23, an amendment to the bylaw enforcement officer bylaw 999-19. Did a review as per our action item under the strategic plan and just found a few amendments for council consideration, and we are asking for all three readings tonight.
So, out of curiosity, why do we have a human resources, like the termination suspension, everything in the bylaw?
Madam Mayor, that's a requirement under the Municipal Government Act. The Municipal Government Act under section 556 requires that the town establishes the disciplinary procedures for bylaw enforcement officer.
Is that new?
Newly discovered.
Oh, newly discovered. Because I didn't see it in the past bylaw, is why I'm wondering, like, all of a sudden, we're putting, like, to me, this should be a human resources issue. This same step should be open to anybody that's in employment in the town of High Level.
I agree, however, the justification behind it from the provincial level on the Municipal Government Act is that bylaw enforcement officers are sworn officers upholding the law. The idea is that they're held to the same kind of code of service standard that any other peace officer service or police service would uphold.
Counsel, any questions?
On the first reading?
All in favor of first reading? Opposed? I just don't think this should be in a, like, I would like to see, like, I don't understand why it's in here. I understand what you're saying. But why wouldn't it be in a human resource, or like, it just doesn't make sense? Yeah. Someone? Want to move second reading? Counselor? What's your name? Anderson, kidding. All in favor? Those opposed? I'm still opposed. No? Did you say leave?
No.
Okay. Unanimous consent to someone making that motion? Deputy Mayor? All in favor? Those opposed? I would like to see more information on this.
Madam Mayor, by default, this will be brought to your next regular meeting.
Yeah. Okay, on to community standards amendments. Director Gavin?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to catch up here. Yes, so we did a review of the community standards bylaw as well. And there are a number of proposed changes, really regarding, I think the big one was the cleanup order timeline, just establishing that. So that's under the requirements of the MGA, and a few other grammar changes. I don't know if it's me, if I'm not seeing my RFD. Oh, it is there, sorry, I'm just. Yeah, so a few grammar changes, and then really the timelines for cleanup orders on this one. So again, asking for all three readings tonight.
So Director Gavin, with the cleanup orders, were they not two weeks before, or were they three?
Well, we didn't have a timeline, and we were really just applying discretion based on the circumstance. So sometimes it was 7:14, 21, depending. So we did do a review, and it's 14 under the MGA, so that's what we've gone with. Yeah.
Okay. I really must read my MGA again, because I never seen that in there. Okay, because I'd like to see seven days. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
There is a seven-day provision in the Municipal Government Act, however, it only applies to orders being issued under section 546 pertaining to emergencies or dangerous properties, not to general orders.
What would fall under emergency?
Like an abandoned excavation hole or derelict structure that was about to fall over and injure somebody, or something like that.
Sort of like that abandoned hole on 103rd Ave by Social Housing? Is it 103rd Street, sorry?
The burnt-out social housing house.
Yes.
Property is.
Yes. So that's an emergency order? Okay.
Madam Mayor, we do have a list of properties that once the MGA change had occurred for the charges onto the tax roll, once that had changed back, that we were bringing this back in June to council, and that property is on that list.
So, can we put in there the emergent seven-day? Into our bylaw?
We did.
Did you?
Yes.
Oh. What clause is that?
Seven, 25.
25, yes, up seven.
Oh, okay.
Or six, yeah.
Sorry. I know you're tired, I don't mean. Okay, fine. Counsel, is there any other questions? Okay.
I'll move first reading.
Deputy Mayor moves first reading, all in favor? Carried. Is there anyone ready to move second reading?
I can do second.
Counsel Welkey? All in favor? Carried. Unanimous consent. Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. And finally, somebody to move third?
I'll move third in final reading.
Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carried. The next one is the scope of the CPO program.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a new policy. After doing a review of all the other ones, we decided to put together a new scope of enforcement policy, particularly after our discussion back in November at the Planning Development Budget Meeting presentation. And just really outlining, in general terms, the main municipal enforcement calls and services that we provide, and then the distinction between the two officer types, particularly if they are reactive or proactive for each call, and then setting up like a priority framework for each officer type as well. So, I'll take, any questions, or we will take any questions.
Okay, so Counsel, do you have any questions about this scope? So, just for clarification, bylaw will be the new, like, the four-month person? Because we don't know who's bylaw and who's.
So the seasonal position started today until beginning of October, that is the seasonal bylaw officer position. And then we have a Sergeant CPO, to the left of me here, has a CPO 1 appointment. And then we also have another full-time officer position, which is currently a bylaw enforcement position.
Okay. So Counsel, have you had a chance to review? Is there anything you would like to add, change? This all comes from discussion? And I will entertain a motion. Or not? Deputy Mayor? Okay, questions? None? All in favor? Carried. Finally, 13-5 is the High Level and District Chamber spring cleanup?
We missed 13-4. Sorry.
Sorry. Oh. CPO program policies, review and amendments, 13-4.
Yeah, so we did another review of the policies for the CPO program, so the 231-10 peace officer policy, 261-19, the firearms policy, and 263-21, the use of force and arrest policy. So just bringing them again, excuse me, into conformance with provincial legislation, and then any a few other updates that we've done, particularly in terms of, I guess, identification, his/her versus they or them pronouns as well. So we're just doing a few updates throughout those, and they're all marked in red.
Questions, Counsel? No? Motion? Counselor Welkey?
I'll move alternative one, that's adopted as presented.
All in favor? Carried. Where did Marco?
Sorry, my connection's getting kind of bad, I have to turn my.
Okay. Just steal. Yes, no? I? Okay, the High Level Chamber cleanup.
Madam Mayor, we met with Counselor Lambert as the representative of the High Level and District Chamber Comer to discuss the town cleanup. The briefing note is outlined there before you, there was a request to redo the areas for community cleanup. Mainly splitting the areas that are marked on there as four and five, used to be one area, with the alleys in that area that was considered quite large. As part of that, there was also a request from the chamber to increase the amount of money allocated to the spring cleanup. Actually, if I may, Counselor Lambert, that was probably 500 per section, was it not? Yeah, so it should be, it should be $5,500, my apologies.
And what was the reasoning?
So last year, they had a hard time getting volunteers to, I guess, volunteer to clean up the areas. They had a total of six, I believe, take on all 12 of them. So a lot of places did two, totaling a $640 per nonprofit group, which a lot of them, you know, for some of the work they had to do, especially in the downtown core of sections four and three, they did have quite a bit of work ahead of them. I understand it's volunteer, but that was one of the reasons why they were looking for a bit more funds, just to entice more people to step up and volunteer. Yeah. That was the biggest issue.
Counsel, any other questions? It's a dirty job, so I agree. Somebody want to make a motion? I'll make the motion that we up it to 5,500. All in favor? Opposed? Deputy Mayor? Well, my neck's getting sore. Okay. All right. So correspondence for action, there's none, correspondence for information. Does somebody want to move that for information? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. No more, question period. Is there any more questions from the gallery? Seeing none. This ends our public portion of our meeting, and we will go into in-camera into a closed session. So thank you for attending, and have a good evening, everyone.